Hi, this is Steve Brown. I'm a former mayor and former Fayette County Commissioner. We are running again, James Clifton and I. He's running for post number four on the city council. I'm running for mayor and we need to change things. We want to get Peachtree City back on track. And right now Peachtree City has a mayor that refuses to give taxpayers back excess revenues that they've collected over her four-year term that she wants to use as a slush fund. Let me tell you what's going on. The projected fiscal year 2026 budget is around $58 million and the city is holding reserves at nearly 60% or $34 million. Now, anyone spreading the lie that the idea of giving the taxpayers back the excess revenues collected was a, and that there was a last-minute surprise, look, that's a total, that's just a total lie. You should be ashamed of yourself. Councilwoman Suzanne Brown has been requesting a full millage rate rollback for two years. And in fact, she voted against the fiscal year 2025 budget because it did not include a full rollback for the taxpayers. She was not provided with vital budget data that she had requested. And this is from a July 11, 2024 council meeting. Watch this.
We are elected by the people and we have an obligation to protect the people from excessive taxation and that includes taxation that gets imposed by us. Early on in the budget process, I requested a fair amount of data and I was told that I had to have a consensus of council members to agree to get the data that I was asking for. I find that kind of odd because if we're the approving authority, you would think that the data would be readily available to us. That just doesn't work out that way. As I said last month, I want the millage rate rolled back. There are items in the budget that I want removed. We had a council and executive staff retreat in January and identified items that we wanted to see in Peachtree City, wanting to see them and demanding that we see them are kind of two different things. I've equated that making that list to writing out a Christmas list as soon as I used to get the Sears catalog when I was a child. All of the items on that list are now in the budget. The problem is that there was no preliminary presentation of those items or projects with the projected cost for the council to vote on or look at or consider or learn about prior to them showing up in the budget. We didn't get that information any bit faster than you did. Without that, the problem is that there was no preliminary presentation of those items or a project with the projected cost for the council to vote on. And without that formal vote, how or why are those items in the budget? I think they add up to about $2.6 million. So I would like to see the budget amended. I'd like to see it amended today. We still have another week to go. To remove the fiscal year 2005 funding from all of those items because items removed may affect the millage rate, especially with the cost of living increase. And much as it pains me to say this, the employee performance pay plan and all the new staff positions, with the exception of public safety. I was the one who suggested that we do the employee performance pay plan because I really felt that was needed for our public safety workers. And yet, when I asked for what was contained in the public or in the performance pay plan, I was not able to get a copy of that either. I wanted to make sure that it was written the way I wanted and it covered what I thought or envisioned as wanting, but I was not allowed to get that. So please don't try to tell me that every new item in the budget will come in front of council for final approval when the money is actually spent. While that is true, every one of those items in the budget increases the total budget amount and drives the military higher than it should be or needs to be. I had discussions about my desire to do a full rollback because citizens are struggling with inflation. And increases in goods, services, utilities, yeah, my electric bill was the highest I've ever paid for an electric bill for last month, and I'm sure it's going to be higher this month. Too many people here in Peachtree City are living paycheck to paycheck. Ignoring or disregarding the plight of our citizens is simply heartless. There's no point in setting the military based on all of those items that are in the budget, included in the budget. Many of them should be defunded for fiscal year 2025. Then set the military and if, as we progress through the year, there are adequate resources to add some of those items and actually fund them in the middle of the year, we can add them back into the budget as funded items. To be responsible and accountable to our citizens and not overburden them, we should be setting the budget as though it's coming out of our pockets. We have the opportunity and I think an obligation to remove items and evaluate each of those items individually with the cost of each of those items. What we are struggling with right now is the issue of having true responsibility and transparency in our budget. If you are proud of the items in the budget, why refuse to give me the simple data that I asked for? I asked for a copy of the employee performance pay plan and was told three council members had to agree that I should get it. I recommended that plan because I really thought that was the way we should go. But without the details, I can't even support the same plan that I recommended. How do we do what's best for our citizens if we cannot get answers to simple questions that we feel are vital to making our decisions? My Christmas wish list every year as a kid had a snow cone machine on it and a horse. I never got the snow cone machine. I did eventually get the horse. My mother was far wiser than I was. So I guess I have to play the part that my mother played all those years ago, but I'm sorry that this process let staff get their hopes up for all these things. But since you choose to wait until now to tell us the actual cost, you leave me certainly, and hopefully the rest of us, with no choice but to tell you that what items we want to fund it or remove from the budget. But it's the five of us who have to impose the tax on the citizens, not the staff. It's the council that has to actually do that tax approval. So we're the ones that are going to take the heat for it. If anything, this has taught me that city council retreats are a sham intended to bloat the budget. Our next retreat is scheduled for July 30th and 31st in Suwannee. I objected to wasting money having the retreat in Suwannee. It's a waste of money. We could have the retreat here in Peachtree City. I was outvoted. Why? What will we do in Suwannee that we can't do right here for a fraction of the cost? So hopefully either tonight or at our retreat, we will identify the items to defund or remove. And maybe then I will be able to say the retreat was productive and saved some money. And since we're not going to actually address individual items at this point that I think need to be defunded, I guess I'm done with my comments for now.
Now, keep in mind, that was Councilwoman Brown from July of 2024, talking about the fiscal year 2025 budget that we're currently in. She asked for data related to brand-new line items on the budget and they refused to give her the information. They said it would take a majority of council to approve it to allow her to see information on a line item in the budget. That's how bad things have gotten here in Peachtree City. It's a shame. And then she goes on to say, in all of that, that there's millions of dollars in additional expenses that had never been put on a council meeting agenda, never been discussed by the city council, never been approved by the city council, and they were sneakily put into the budget for FY 2025. This is the kind of corrupt activity that we have going now. That was back in 2024. So now let's look at the August, recent August 21 city council meeting. We've got Clint Holland. He's a council member. He's offered his motion to accept the budget with the provision that the city issue a full rollback, meaning no tax increase, and that the balance of the expanded budget be funded using the large excess funds that we have in the city's reserve fund. Mayor Kim Lerner, who has bloated the budget and raised taxes every year she's been the mayor, begins to become enraged. And this is when the phony claim of "I have never heard of this before." The mayor says that refunding the excess tax dollars to the taxpayers is a disservice to the city. Can you believe that? Giving you your money back because they've collected too much money is a disservice to the city. Let's watch this clip.
Madam Mayor, I think I'd like to speak first, if that's okay. You know, our budget is $58 million this year. 58 million. And we have a, I will call it a reserve fund of 59% of that or $34 million. And I think it's time that we give something back to the taxpayers in this city. And for that, I will make a motion to approve this budget, but only with the provision that we move enough money out of the reserve fund so that we can approve a full rollback of the millage rate for fiscal year 25 and 26.
Mr. Holland, that's not the motion. That's not--
Excuse me, I'll second that motion.
Okay, you have a second.
Well, could you repeat your motion, Mr. Holland?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
This is the first, for the record, this is the first I've heard of this. We've been talking about budgets since February.
And we've been talking about the bloated amount of reserve fund also. I make a motion to approve this budget, but only with the provision that we move enough money out of the reserve funds so that we can approve a full rollback of the millage rate for this coming year of fiscal year 25 and 26. That's the motion.
Is that the second that you have, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
That is a motion and a second. So how does that even work? That all of a sudden, in the 11th hour, we're going to change our reserve amount after the presentation that we heard from our CFO about how it is these reserves that help us keep a AAA bond rating? We've gone through months of discussion on these numbers and now you want to change the numbers tonight? Do you have new numbers? Do you have what you want that amount to be?
The budget's going to remain the same amount. It's just moving the reserves.
I stand by my sentence here that I've said.
I cannot believe that this would come up something. I take this very seriously. This has been a very public process. We've had citizen input all along. We've had a public hearing. We had two people in our public hearing show up to speak. They both spoke in favor of everything that was shown. We've been discussing it for months. And now the night that we're supposed to approve the budget, there is a, there's a new plan. I cannot, I absolutely cannot accept it, do not support it. It is disrespectful to, to me and to this staff and to our process.
But it's certainly not disrespectful to the citizens that pay taxes in this city.
The citizens have been part of this process all along. This has been a very public process. The numbers, the reserves, everything has been presented, public hearing on that, not on your proposal, but it's all been out there in the public. This is a shame. This is a disservice to the citizens of this city.
Now, can you imagine a mayor of a city that has a huge excess in reserve funds because they've collected too much in taxes year after year after year while Kim Lerner has been mayor? And now she says to give it back to the taxpayers, the excess funds, to give it back to those taxpayers is a disservice. What a joke. Now, the city manager and Councilwoman Laura Johnson stated that HB 581, which passed the Georgia Legislature, it meant that there would be no residential tax increases. Well, actually, that's not true. And I don't think Ms. Johnson really understands House Bill 581. The legislation helps slow the growth of our property taxes, but it deals with the home's market value. And all of our market values in Peachtree City have surged over the past years, as you can tell in your tax bills. Now, that bill only deals with your property value, not the millage rate issued by the city. Local governments can increase the tax rate, which is the millage, which could still raise your overall tax bill, even if your assessed property value is capped. Now, this hurts Mayor Lerner specifically because she always uses the trickery of saying she did not raise the millage rate to imply that she did not raise taxes, knowing that your property taxes were going up every year because of rising property values. Now, Holland's motion means that our local business owners, in addition to our homeowners, would finally get a well-earned reprieve on their taxes. The mayor calls for the vote on Holland's motion and it loses two to two. Let's watch.
That is not the motion on the table. For the motion and the second, go ahead and give us an all in favor, say aye.
All those in favor--
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. No, your proposal did not pass. Now, we still have a budget in front of us that we've been discussing and debating with our citizens since February. Is there any other question about that?
The mayor did finally have to admit, because previously she said, "This stuff about the reserves, this is the first I've ever heard of it." Well, she did have to admit that the council had been discussing moving on the budget since February of 2025. And it was in February at the city retreat that Councilwoman Suzanne Brown asked to curb the excess reserve funds and look to a full rollback of the millage. So the August 21 meeting was not the first time that the mayor had heard about using the excess reserve funds. And Suzanne Brown was responding to a direct question by the city manager asking what they wanted to do on the budget. So let's look at the actual footage from February 11, 2025, and Councilwoman Brown's comment when the city manager asked for comments on the fiscal year 2026 budget. She chided the manager for throwing in $2.4 million worth of items that were never planned, discussed, or approved in a public meeting. She clearly states she wants a rollback of the millage rate. So all of the pomp and hysteria from Mayor Lerner is just a lie. Let's watch.
Discussing this completely now, or are we gonna--
That's what I did say. Let's just go ahead and talk about the budget one. Because that'll, that probably will inform the rec talk.
So my concern would be if you have any department that puts a new item, big chunk item, that's beyond the normal inflationary whatever within their budget to the agenda, that needs to get flagged to us earlier, like rather than later. I don't want to find out about that when you're saying, "Oh, you have to vote on the budget."
Okay.
So any specific-- Any, where they're saying, "Oh, we're going to need this and this and this." On in the budget process because-- I really like this. I really want this. I have to have this. And those are things that need to be brought to our attention with price tags early on so a decision can be made. Because the biggest objection I had last year, and I'm just going to beat the dead horse one more time, is when you add $2.4 million worth of stuff in that came out of a retreat that did not have-- Is my big complaint. With an expectation we were going to pass it. And I felt that was not the way that things should proceed. We should have a better idea of if we're going to add this program, that program, or this, we need to know what it is and we need to sit with just that item, talk it out, vote on it, and say yes or no. Is it in or out?
So I could see the individual discussion. I could see that. I would, I would argue that we did, we presented the budget a month before you voted on it. So I would, I would argue that. And the budget was what it was and it had everything in it. So you had a month to look at it.
The big binder was, you know, 800 pages?
I, I get it. I, I understand.
Okay, tag and flag the things that have made drastic changes in the budget. That's what I'm saying.
We can, we can do that.
If you're adding some big item or somebody's, some department's budget, and I anticipate fire department budget is going to go up as we get closer to the new fire station, you know, with issues where stuff's going to have to be spent. So those need, you know, like flag that, tell us, you know, focus our attention on the things that are changing. Because if a department has a budget and it's only going up by the normal rates of inflation from one year to the next, that's not what I'm talking about.
Sure.
I'm talking about big ticket items that get added in.
I'm just, I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily want to argue about last year because I agree with aspects of that. But I do, you know, the June presentations we did, I feel like in the PowerPoint, we highlighted what the big changes and ask were. And it, and there was time for council to talk about it if you wanted to. And that's just, that's just me. But I do feel as far as, and that's why I feel like April's important, is I do plan to get with staff as far as what are you going to ask for fiscal year 26, before we get to the April meeting, big things that are not, like what you said, especially these items that are coming out of retreats.
What I'm asking for fiscal year 26--
I understand.
Is there right now, a rollback? And that's not going to happen if each individual department is bloating their budget or things get put in there without a tag and a flag to council saying, "Hey, we added this because you agreed and you voted on it," which of course, all that stuff, we talked about it. It got priced out, it got put into the budget. We never got to revisit it before it went into the budget. And then it was, "Oh, we'll talk about this. We'll talk about this. We'll talk about this." And the next thing you know, it's, "Oh, vote on the budget."
Well, that's, to me, that just, to me, it goes back to council. Like, it's presented a month before. It's up to you all to discuss.
Congress when they were putting Obamacare in, "Oh, it's 20,000 pages. Sign the bill and then read it." No, that's not the way things work.
Did I, I don't think I ever asked that. I don't think I ever said vote on this and then read it.
We had $2.4 million worth of stuff added to the budget that never came back in front of council. That was all special projects stuff. That never came back to council with the exact price tag attached to it for a yes or no, up or down vote. Yes, do we put it in this year's budget or do we delay?
And for the record, Councilwoman Brown made a desperate attempt to obtain that budget information for the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget, specifically requesting movement on excess reserves and a full rollback. With the approval of Mayor Lerner, here's the city manager's insubordinate reply to Brown's request for budget data. Let's read it together. He says, "Councilwoman Brown, I could put together alternatives for the city council to consider, but it would take my time to do this. I am adding all the council onto here as I feel this is a significant request that would need to come from the city council itself as a mandate." And that email was dated June 25 of 2024. Councilwoman Brown was ordered to just vote for the budget as proposed. Thankful for the taxpayers, she did refuse and she voted against that budget. But can you imagine the audacity of the city manager telling one of her superiors that, "I'm sorry, I can't get your budget information. It takes too much of my time." That's hysterical. I can't believe we're doing business like this. Now, one of the most significant problems with the excess fund and funds and reserves is that they become a slush fund. And instead of returning the excess to the taxpayers in the following year's tax bill, the mayor and city manager opt to spend the funds on a spending spree. Here is the city manager at the February retreat saying he prefers to spend down the excess funds on unbudgeted items. The hypocrisy here is that they view giving taxpayers a break as detrimental. Let's watch this.
I think with a range, number one, you're being more transparent with your, with your tax base, with your taxpayers. Number two, as staff, it helps when we're talking about something like bathrooms at Battery Way or something like that, to say, especially right now, if we adopted like a 50% range, we're above it. So it goes, says and triggers, "Okay, we need to spend down to get within that threshold." But number two is, is once you get within that threshold, you start approaching it. That's kind of a trigger to staff of, "Okay, let's relook at our revenue. Let's relook at our expenditures and also relook at some, maybe some capital items that we've been hanging on to to build our reserves up that maybe we could spend, we could get with council and see what they think about spending this on this needed thing." Because as of right now, with my job, it doesn't look good for me to come to council and say, "We need to balance this budget this year. I want to spend $2 million of fund balance because we need to do XYZ." Whereas if we have a policy that says, "Well, the threshold is this. We're getting close to it." Just to get back within our threshold to be helped, to be in our healthy range, we have this project we've been sitting on for two years that we think we could do. And I make the recommendation we spend it instead of just saying it looks like, like we just need to operate in a deficit. That, does that make sense?
I just can't stand it when you have a city manager and a finance director who think that giving excess revenue generated from property taxes back to the actual taxpayers who paid those taxes is a horrible thing to do. And he wants to make up a list of projects to spend the money on, which are going to require more staffing and more maintenance, which means they're going to increase your taxes again to cover all of that. The insanity in the budgeting right now is just off the charts. And look, it's essential to remember that the city government is not a business. The government always gets its money by force if necessary. Now, having a massive reserve is fine for a private business as a hedge, but the government sets the rate and the taxpayers have to pay. So you don't need massive excesses in reserves. Now, back to the August 21 council meeting, we know that giving excess reserves back to the taxpayers was discussed in February. And the mayor admits the discussion has been ongoing since then. She just wants more employees, an even bigger budget, and a slush fund that she can use to spend on anything that she wants. Let's watch this.
Still have a budget in front of us that we've been discussing and debating with our citizens since February. Is there any other question about that? Concerns?
I think we need to give the citizens some of the reserves back.
Did this, I just cannot fathom that this would come up live in a city council meeting. Boy, Mr. Holland, you can tell it's an election year, sir. We've been discussing this publicly.
For both of us, Mayor. We're both of us this year.
We've been talking about reducing the reserves for two years.
Talking is one thing. Creating months of budget hours, cities, our, every department has spent weeks with our city manager. We have a five-year budget model and a plan in place. It's right before us in black and white. And now at the 11th hour in a public meeting, you think it's appropriate to change the game? That is disrespectful to our citizens. I would like to hear from our city manager one more time, or maybe our CFO, because we've already had this conversation, what the many, many advantages are to keeping this reserve at 59%.
Now, she says talking is one thing, which, which she admits, yes, they've been talking about using the excess reserves and they've been talking about doing a full millage rollback for two years. But she goes, "No, no, no. Talking is one thing. I'm not going to do it and we're not going to do it because I don't want it done. I want my slush fund." So now we have an angry mayor explaining how she uses this slush fund, these excess reserves, as her own personal account for items that only she wants. And let's watch this video.
I don't want to do anything that's going to compromise our bond rating or our ability to do grant matching, make purchases of land, capital equipment-- to do grant matching, make purchases of land, capital equipment, capital expenses. I just, I am beside myself, Mr. Holland. Unbelievable.
Now, after the mayor attempted to bully him, Councilman Holland stuck to his position on giving the excess reserves that were generated by you, the taxpayers, back to you, the taxpayers. Let's watch Councilman Holland.
Mr. Holland, she's a very reasonable--
I stood by-- Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I've stood by exactly what I said. It's time to give back. We have been taxing the people of Peachtree City and the businesses of Peachtree City for quite a while. It's time to give them back. We've got a bloated number. The state says you only need about 30%, 33% to be exact, as far as reserves. And you can still maintain a AAA bond rating with that.
As they keep talking and making sense, at least to the taxpayers, not to the mayor, obviously, we also see Councilwoman Brown. She has refused to submit to the mayor's taunting, and she stuck to her position on giving the mayor's slush fund away back to the taxpayers. Let's watch this.
For shame. Our citizens deserve better.
Our citizens are gonna get what they deserve.
Our citizens--
They're gonna get some of their taxes back.
Let's not forget that Councilwoman Brown has been fighting the battle for two years, saying the exact same thing. The mayor now comes back again with the same thing she's been saying for two years. "Well, let's come up with a plan. Let, well, we're only talking about it. Let's keep talking about it." She doesn't want to do it. She doesn't respect the taxpayers. And let's watch Councilwoman Brown.
We have been talking about reducing the reserves for quite some time. And reducing the reserves in this way gives it back to the people who paid it out in the beginning, the taxpayers.
Now, forced to deal with the issue of why she will not give the taxpayers back their money in excess taxes, the mayor goes to the city manager, who actually comes clean and says the city's actual policy is for the reserve funds to be above 31%. So there really is no excuse for carrying a nearly 60% in reserves to use as a slush fund. Let's watch.
Justin, I would like to hear your comments about the budget, the reserves, and what this means to our city going forward.
Reserves 59%. That's, the percentage, whatever council wants the reserves to be, is fine with me, as long as our policy is for them to be above 31% or 31% or above, or a minimum of 31%. I think that's the exact language. So anything above that, whatever council wants it to be, I'm good with.
Now, the budget proposal was tabled for the September 18 city council meeting. Councilmembers Brown and Holland had asked the city manager to come up with those budget cuts that he was talking about, he suggested. And we're going to see what they come up with at that meeting on the 18th. Now, I have been following the city's budget process and have just been bewildered by how crazy and how ridiculous the arguments are. And I found Mayor Lerner's comments at the August 21 meeting to be highly offensive, and I expressed my concerns at the September 4 council meeting. And here are my comments.
Thank you. Hate that clock still. It's a disgrace. Mayor Lerner, your conduct at the August 21 council meeting was deeply disappointing, while other council members engaged in thoughtful, respectful dialogue. Your behavior stood out as combative and unprofessional. I want to commend councilmembers Holland and Brown for standing up for the taxpayers. Their push to reduce our reserves and rollback the milit rate reflects the kind of fiscal stewardship Peachtree City desperately needs. For anyone to claim, Councilmember Brown's request came out of nowhere is simply dishonest. She has been advocating for this for two years. Watch the February retreat video. She made her position clear multiple times when asked by the city manager, "What do you want to do on the budget?" She voted against the FY 2025 budget for the exact same reasons. It didn't come out of nowhere. The truth is, her voice has been consistently marginalized. Last year, the city manager even told her in an email that he didn't have time to address her budget concerns. That's not transparency. That's obstruction. Let's be honest, the city's budget playbook hasn't changed in years. It's add more employees, inflate expenses, expand the budget, raise taxes, ignore critical maintenance, and hike the city fees. It's a formula that requires no vision, no innovation, and no accountability. In all the budget discussions I've watched over the past four years, I've never once heard the mayor ask, "Where can we find efficiencies?" Or, "How do we ease the tax burden on our citizens and our businesses?" Instead, it's always more spending, more taxes, and when questioned, blame the staff. What's worse, we've watched as land zoned for corporate and industrial uses, our future tax base has been rezoned for residential development. That short-sighted decision will haunt us in the future when we need all that revenue to offset our rising residential taxes. You adopted HB 581 and have the audacity to propose $140 billion, I mean, $1 million of new recreation projects. That is crazy. How in the world are you gonna staff and maintain those, especially with tens of millions in outstanding maintenance, and hundreds of millions in added additional expenses? The fire station on South 74, the latest example. And when, when the mayor told WSB Television that the sweeping new expenditures in that year's budget wouldn't cost the taxpayers a cent, it became painfully clear, we have a competency problem. And hopefully, we're gonna change that in November. Thank you.
And I'll be honest with you. I hope we do change it in November. Eric Emker, former city council member, who both Kim Lerner and myself acknowledge as someone who's very competent with our city's budget, is supporting me for mayor. And the reason is, is he knows that I have brought deficit budgets back from the city, and I've brought deficit budgets back from the county and restored them fully. I've created the AAA bond rating, first of its kind, for both Peachtree City and Fayette County. We've got to get back to disciplined fiscal management. Get the slush funds out of there. Stop collecting and pocketing all those excess taxes that the property owners should be spending on their own, not the city, on unbudgeted items that the mayor wants to spend. The early election begins October the 14th. James Clifton and I are running in tandem with one another. He's running for post four, and I'm running for mayor. We would really appreciate your votes. And let's get Peachtree City back on track. Go to our website, ptcbackontrack.com. Thank you.